Appropriate permissions, that's probably something that we need to look at as far as allowing certain language in there and potentially not being as stringent as far as some of the requirements.
I'll, I'll make those two notes and we'll talk about those.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments, just make sure you get them to me and we'll try to address those as we.
Well, the parking, does it have to be striped or anything as far as the appropriate parking for that?
Well, that, I mean, that's what happens when you do designated parking spaces, it'll have to be. Designated parking with one handicap space and those kind of requirements.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I did overlook, my apology, the approval of the minutes from the December timeframe. Was there any questions or comments from?
A motion.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next section is the tabled items from the previous meeting. We have large scale eighteen dash thirty-seven Bible Missionary Church, two-ten West County Line Roads, also has a waiver for street improvements eighteen dash twenty-nine, and two variances on here covered under B nineteen dash zero-three, variance for deviation of detention requirement and deviation of commercial design standards presented by Gray Rock.
Well, this is, this is concern that, that we were having, we were going to make sure we, we discuss this. Your deviation of the detention requirement, Carl, do you want to comment on that? Because I think that's the issue that could cause this thing to be tabled.
Got it.
Okay. Just like Carl, the, the rest of it is pretty standard comments as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, I think the engineering department was under the impression that it would be tabled on our end.
Okay. Okay. Because they still have engineering questions and drainage questions that need to be resolved with the engineering department before you feel like it can be moved forward.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda are eighteen dash forty-two DND rental LLC David Burton. And I assume that whole thing was tabled, right? Sorry if I'm confusing things on here.
Eric, do y'all want to talk about, before, before we start on this other one, do you want to talk about the, the variance of the?
Sorry, I'm starting January off really confusing on this.
Look, I'm confused, but that's all right, we can all be confused.
Okay. You're asking for a deviation of the commercial design standards to not have the requirement of the sidewalk connection from the principal entrance to the public sidewalk?
Yes.
And you're asking for a waiver of the, of the street improvements including the sidewalks, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you want those acted on tonight or do you want to wait till that all comes back together?
I have no problem with dealing with it tonight although it's almost irrelevant.
Well, it, the only reason, the, the question would be if there's major modifications that has to be done to take care of the detention.
Fair enough. Let, let's talk about it then.
Okay.
So, basically, we're requesting not to put the public sidewalk in for a couple of reasons. For one, there's no sidewalk in this general area and so it's, it, it is a sidewalk to nowhere. It connects to nothing and has no connectivity or possibility to connect to anything. And so that, that we were asking for that waiver for that reason. And then connectivity from sidewalk to the building was because there is no sidewalk so therefore we don't have the connectivity to it.
But you're asking for a waiver of the street improvements because you would be required to do street improvements of full width of this piece of property which includes curb, gutter sidewalks and drainage. So you're asking for street improvements that includes the sidewalk?
Yes, yes.
Or you aren't going to do any of that?
That, that is correct.
Okay, okay.
Also because of the small section of, you really wouldn't widen that small of a section anyway, there would be a blip in the road that widened out and then.
It's really hard to see up here. Well, I, I can't believe we have all these lights on because usually we don't have that much light here.
What are you talking about?
Is, is there not sidewalk in that subdivision just to the west of it along county line where the road is improved?
Also on the east.
Obviously. See, there's, you know, there is sidewalk.
That sidewalk does have, that subdivision does have sidewalk.
So then it would be that piece, the, the lot that's next to us, that's between you and that one, I mean, it would connect to that if the sidewalk was built. Oh, okay. Yeah. I mean, it's this piece right here that you're missing, that the sidewalk wouldn't be at this point and then you would be building it across.
Yeah, and you wouldn't want to build the sidewalk, well, you really couldn't build the sidewalk without the street improvements.
Have to ask the possibility of pay, payment in lieu of improvements for those, that section of street improvements including the sidewalk?
Could we do payment in lieu for the sidewalk but not the street improvements?
Oh, is that, council has to make the decision.
Well, I think if the road gets widened, it would be part of some major widening project. It wouldn't be because each one of these residences widened their portion of the street.
Unless I change uses.
Okay. Many questions or comments in the audience to the commission?
One quick question, so the, the road improvements that this applicant is asking to waive was done for the subdivision though, was it not?
Yeah. Yeah, they did, their, the street improvements were done with that subdivision on county line.
I think that subdivision is within a ten, if you take from that subdivision sidewalk to the other one, it's like a tenth of a mile and then two tenths to the next sidewalk on the west, I mean, on the east side.
Yes, sir.
And, and those have been there for a while. So I, my concern is we're asking again for general population to pick up the bill that should be normally handled by the property owner when they do those improvements.
In the church's defense, the church existed prior to all of this. So the church existed prior to it even coming in. So their development, yes, I would agree with that if we were building a church today, you would want to meet code, but the church is existing, really the reason we're here for large scale is because they want to build a residence on the back of the property for the pastor.
But the code is not for whether you're building a new church, the code is because you're building something new.
And, and, and in all.
Making an improvement to the site.
And in all fairness, the church is growing and then there's people that may be coming to activities from the church that may live in those subdivisions and choose to walk or may go down the street to where there's a gas station or, and that's part of building that for the community. And we're not asking you to do something outside of what.
I, I understand. I still think it's a heavy burden to ask of the church because they want to build a parsonage to widen the street for the possibility of it being used. Again, if this was, if they were just building a house, which is what this is, we wouldn't even be here. We don't come to large scale for residences. It's because the residence is on a church property is why we're coming here.
Well, it's an expansion of the church operation on that side. Nothing to say that that house couldn't be converted to classrooms or something in the future.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, and it may or may not be, but parsonages tend to be used by the church.
It's clearly a residence.
By the church for events as well.
No, it is clearly a residence. I mean, it, it's a, it's a fifteen hundred square foot house with a garage and it's a residence. It doesn't look.
I, I guess I've been to parsonages for various reasons and part of church events, so.
So, so do you want to co, you want the question, the waiver of the street improvements to come to a vote tonight?
I mean, what I hear is you, you're interested in payment in lieu of for the sidewalk. I'm sorry, yes, for the sidewalk but not for street improvements.
I think that is fair.
Actually, do we know what the plan is for the street? Does there anything that works?
I don't know of anything that is, you know, it's not in this current bond program. It is on the master street plan for extension and improvement all the way through, but there's not anything in this bond program. I don't know that it's on any list. I saw the mayor, that, I don't know that there's anything being considered for improvement to county line right now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, there, there was another property on the other side of the street, just maybe a block down that is getting improved, is that correct? They will have to put a sidewalk?
I believe so, but I'd have to go back and look. Now, there's, there's one at the end of the street, there's a couple down this that we've considered in the last couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, I think they've not gotten that far along, but I thought they also were having to do street. So, so I, there, again, there's my concern that things are starting to happen out there and then we put the burden on the rest of the city when really only time that we can.
So we're still asking for a waiver of street improvements, but within that payment, willing to do payment in lieu of for sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. This would be a recommendation. Yeah, if you'll come up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Hi, Herb Vogel. I was just looking at the picture though, if the church widens the road, it's going to be wide, narrow, wide, right? I mean, that, in my opinion, just doesn't really make sense to do that at that point in time. It seems like if the church is willing to pay for the sidewalk in the future, it seems like that whole road expansion should be part of the, a city expansion of some sort. It just, I, I don't know what you're going to do with a ninety feet of wide road that narrows back down. To me, that's more of a traffic issue.
I don't think they were looking for the widening to happen now, I think they're looking for a lieu of, so when the road does get improved, they would just simply pay their portion of it.
Gotcha.
Well, no, no, no. Right, he's, he's, they're asking for a complete waiver of the street improvements and he's only wanting to do payment in lieu of for sidewalk.
I understand what he's asking for, what I thought you were asking for was, are we, are they open to having a lieu of future?
No, I was just stating what they are recommending to do in this. So that, clearly wanting to have a waiver of this, the, the widening, street improvements and stuff like that, so the, the curb and guttering. Okay? Yeah, this is a, a motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend the council under the waiver of street improvements and sidewalk improvements, is that correct?
The payment in lieu of for sidewalk improvement, okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Covert.
So, let me answer, so you're making a motion where they would do payment in lieu of for both or just for the sidewalk?
Just sidewalk.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton. So just so that we're clear, this would be a recommendation to city council for a waiver of street improvements as well as a payment in lieu of for sidewalks.
I think so, yes, I think we're.
Did you just say also a waiver of payment in lieu of?
A wa, a waiver of street improvements and they are willing to make a payment in lieu of for sidewalk.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
Got it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So what's a yes or no gonna, I mean?
Yes means that they, that we recommended to council the waiver of the street improvements with the payment for.
Okay, okay. Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, passes five-one. Okay, thank you.
This recommendation will go to council on the twenty-second.
Okay. Was there anything else we needed to discuss, I'm sorry?
Well, do you want to do the, the deviation or the variance for the commercial design standards before you know whether this is going to go through or not?
Um.
We have the large scale two.
True, that's true.
To review, let's, let's just leave that one and come back after we see what council does.
Agreed. All right. Thank you.
Appreciate your patience on that.
Appreciate your patience, thank you. Okay. Next item, R eighteen dash forty-two DND rental LLC David Burton, seven twenty-five North Forty-Eight Streets from C two to C five presented by David Burton. I promise I won't change it on you again, so.
It's okay. We're asking for a rezone to be able to put in a, an additional display pool on the property.
Staff comments?
Uh, the adopted comprehensive land use plan that can, indicates reasonable commercial use for the area, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies that the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail service and office uses where their highest traffic volumes and great, greatest utility demands can be served and more extensive outdoor display of materials can be, will be expected and permitted that has frontage and/or access to I forty-nine.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes six-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-second.
Thank you. Next item, B eighteen dash fifty-four Herb Vogel, forty-two seventeen Essex Cove, variance for de, deviation of rear setback from twenty feet to ten feet presented by Herb Vogel.
Hi. So, yeah, I had bought a shed that exceeds the city ordinance, I guess, for sheds. I was wanting to get a variance to change the setback from twenty feet to ten feet. This piece of property has a twenty-foot utility easement, but it's centered on the fence, so I would not be violating the utility easement in any way. Nothing grows in that back corner of my lot. If I would have to move it twenty feet, it would be more towards the middle of my yard. So I'm wanting to keep it in that back quadrant.
Staff comments?
I don't think the staff has any comments unless the fire department has. I see the chief over there.
We always oppose setback changes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, if you can come up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
How you doing? I'm Todd Swanton, forty-two thirty-two Kingsbury Cove. How you guys doing tonight? This is my first attending, attendance. I am the neighbor sitting east of the Vogel residence. As you can see on that picture, and I have a picture as well, the, the, yeah, okay.
You can go back to the microphone, would you?
As you can see, that's the shed right here. My house is right, well, actually, I'm sorry, it's not even actually in this picture, this is an old picture, this is going to be my house right here. Now, as you can see where this shed sits right here next, this, his shed sits exactly four feet from the back of my fence. So I'm definitely in opposition for the variance. I did call the planning commission, understand that, you know, very busy. Another concern would be what is the height regulation on that, on that code?
It's eleven feet.
Okay.
Can't be any taller than sixteen, but this one's eleven, right?
Okay. Well, I would say that this is, this is going to be double, I got a six-foot fence and it's going to be double that fence, so I'm actually pretty confident it's going to be over what's regulated on height. Another thing is going to be resale value of my house. So this thing is a, it's an eyesore. So it's like the, the Titanic has dropped into the backyard, so that's, those are my points and I am of opposition of this variance.
Um, the shed right now where it's sitting is not where I want to leave it. The company that installed the shed did not put it where I had asked. So it's actually going to come five more feet away from my side neighbor and at least six or seven feet further into my yard, because right now it is only four feet away and that's not where I had asked them to place it. Not that it matters, but.
If you'll come up to the mic on that, please.
Well, I understand that, you know, usually variances go from, you know, a setback from twenty to ten, so in this case it's going to be from four to twenty, you know, if we wanted to have the correct information on the notification.
Um, those are just pictures of other sheds that I drive by on my way home, so I did not know there was a city ordinance. One of them is actually sitting right next to the electric pole. Like I said, my request is just to have the setback changed from twenty to ten, you know, would I actually move it away, further away from Mr. Swanton's property. I'm wanting to plant those arboretum ornamental cedars that grow tall in that corner to block that corner also because it does slope down, so the shed seems like it sits up more because of the fence also.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the audience to the commission?
Think, you know, that, that we have to be careful, the variances, there's not a reason.
We've got that, we've got this.
But I believe the ordinance is ten feet or, or eleven feet and ten by twelve, so it's over on the square footage, not on the height.
Yeah, it's not, it's not. I, I was trying to get to that, I haven't.
And, and I'm not sure whether the other fences may be grandfathered in, I mean, the other buildings that you're showing.
No, the, the first two are, have been installed in the last year and a half. Uh, one, one in Robbins, one in Thornbury, so.
Um, now, if you, if you were in an agricultural area or, I mean, you know, there needs to be some, because otherwise everybody could go all the way down to the fence line and then we start having issues.
Understand, and I don't want it on the fence, that was never my intent. I just don't want to put it twenty feet from my fence because that puts it in the middle of my backyard. Right now, all that grows in that corner is a bunch of weeds and a tree that I keep trying to kill, so actually, I mean, this would be less than an eyesore.
But you said you're going to plant trees.
I'm going to try to tear all that out and do something with that corner, yes ma'am.
Do y'all have an active POA?
Yeah, they approved it.
Okay. So I, I wanted to call that out.
That's the only rule I knew about was.
And I wanted to call that out, there's, there's a clear difference as far as what we have responsibility of, of covering and what a POA would cover as far as, a POA is going to cover more the aesthetics and, you know, if you have some of those height requirements, I mean, your POA can cover those things. Ours is going to be more as far as the setbacks and so forth associated with that.
I had sent them pictures and everything and had gotten their approval in advance of purchasing the shed.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I never saw approval. I do get minutes and do get, and it, I'm not saying he's not telling the truth, but I look at all the minutes of all the minutes of all the meetings and I didn't see approval on that, but still, it's still code, city code, not POA.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that there is an understanding of the, the difference between the two.
Correct.
And that's something to make sure you probably want to cover with both on there, so, okay. Any other questions or comments? This would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
This does not pass, six-zero.
The variance request cannot be appealed to city council, your only appeal process is through the circuit court.
Okay.
File that within thirty.
Could I ask the planning committee to do one thing then? To educate all these people that sell sheds, that sell to owners not knowing there's a city ordinance that you're violating? I mean, I didn't, like I said, based on those pictures, I drive by all those sheds every day from my work to my house. Some of those are within two thousand feet of my house that violate the ordinance that you're talking about. To me, it's selective enforcement. Unless somebody complains, you enforce it, if nobody complains, you don't enforce it. And I think the retailers that are selling these sheds should be educated and somehow notify residents when you're buying a shed cash down, non-refundable, that now you can't leave on your residence.
Thank you.
By the way, does anybody want to buy a shed?
Thank you for your time and having to hear.
Next item on the agenda, B eighteen dash fifty-six Andrew Marks, nine hundred Bulldog Avenue, variance for deviation, a distance between drives from one hundred and fifty to one hundred and thirty-five feet presented by Andrew Marks.
Hi, I'm Andrew Marks, seventeen forty-five Osage Ben Fayetteville.
Do you have any comments or anything on this or?
Well, I'll explain what's going on. We have a entry into the pipe yard storage area at the Anderson Electric and Plumbing Supply Business and we'd like an exit from that. We're trying to pave that lot and clean it all up and make it much nicer and this exit would assist in that. Bulldog Avenue is a cul-de-sac dead end road, this exit is not on to Highway seventy-one business, there's hardly any traffic and we're more than a hundred and fifty feet from the next driveway at ten-ten Bulldog.
Okay. Staff comments?
I don't think we have any problem with it. It's a, it's fifteen feet, it's not.
Right.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission?
Call for vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Variance passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next section is rezoning. First one is R nineteen dash zero-one Fodobaiari Trust, three-twelve South Thompson from C two to C five presented by Fodobaiari.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have signed up a business that would want to operate scooters and electric bikes and mopeds and selling parts in that location. And find out, it's a, the property is not in compliance because it's on C two and after discussing this with Pat Seem and, and the staff, they suggested that we rezon the property to C five. So I'm here today requesting a change of that rezoning so we can move that business to town. It's a successful business and the owner operates in Fort Smith and, and Memphis.
Staff comments?
Also going to include ATVs, correct?
Pardon?
ATVs as well as.
Yes.
That's, that's the reason it puts it into a different classification. Yeah, adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies that the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations and promote the viability of older commercial property as well as new commercial development. This one's been commercial for several many years.
That's right.
Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes six-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-second.
Thank you, Pat Seem. Next. Next item, R 19-02 Marcy Chavez LLC, 2172 North Thompson from I 1 to C 6, presented by Bob Downham.
Hi, good evening. I buy this property because I want to invest in business in the area. And right now, it's not on the sun I needed, so I want to.
Give us your name, please.
And I want to see if we can change it to C 6.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. Comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and regional centers.
Any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Scott Taylor. Just kind of, can we find out what is getting zoned? I mean, it'd be nice, I mean, I own both sides of the property of her. So I'm just curious, I mean, are we getting, you know, I would love to bought the property as a non-commercial and come up here in front of you guys to get it a commercial, you know, get it bumped to a commercial myself. You know, it's been rumored that it's going to be a used car lot. And I actually have a used car lot there and it's not the competition that I'm bothered by. It's just I literally drove less than a mile on 71 North and South of me and counted over 10. Do we actually need, if that's what it's going in, if that's what it's getting bumped to, do we need another one? That's my comments and questions.
Well, let me explain. We're not rezoning the property just for any particular use, whether it's a used car lot or anything else. Anything that's allowed in the C 5 zone can go into that location, which includes the following uses. Citywide public uses by right, cultural recreational and health facilities, office studios and related services, eating places, hotel motel and, no, C 6, I'm sorry, you're right. Let me start that list all over again, okay? C 5s to C 6. Okay, let's have a split of quote. C 6 allows for citywide public uses by right, automotive services, parking lots, automotive, automobile sales, automotive machinery and equipment, open display retail sales. City doesn't determine by zoning whether or not we have enough of those uses.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I was on the wrong one. I had it all set up for the one that was going to C 5 and didn't change it.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Do you have any comments?
No.
Okay.
I'm just here to help Marcy if she needs some help.
Okay. To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R 19-03 Justin and Whitney Silva, 3095 Wagon Wheel from A 1 to, and C 1 to C 2, presented by Corey Reynolds.
Good evening, I'm Corey Reynolds, I'm with Elevation Real Estate. I'm here on behalf of Justin and Whitney. We're requesting a rezone on this property to take the whole thing to C 2. We've got a business from Fayetteville Construction Company that's wanting to move in and house their offices there. There's an existing house there that's being used as a antique shop right now, and then the remaining property is vacant land. The business is wanting to move up here, the reason to take it to C 2 zoning is they're wanting to build a 50 by 100 shop that would house their cabinet shop, and that's what kicks it over to the C 2 zoning.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and regional centers.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? The only comment that I have on here is, is that, I mean, if there's going to be storage of equipment and things like that, obviously, yes, that is a significantly large lot there that, there will be paving requirements for where there is proper, where there is equipment that is stored and that whole piece.
There's just no zoning issue.
I understand.
That's a large scale issue. We've already.
Is a large scale thing.
We already talked about all those issues when they were looking at this site. Screening to the residential to the south, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. I just want people to go into this with an understanding that you're not just buying the property, you are buying for improvements to it as well, if that is what is going to be done in the whole piece, so. Call for vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 22nd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next section, we have a preliminary plats, replats and final plats. Preliminary plat 19-01 cottages at the parks, or at the park subdivision northwest corner of Downham and West County Line, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. We submitted the preliminary plat for the cottages at the park for Landmark Custom Homes. I believe we reviewed the PUD zoning last meeting. That's been approved by council. And we would like, here requesting approval for the preliminary plat.
Staff comments?
Planning comments, staff has no additional comments other than the standard comments. And you're going to see from now on, we're going to give you the standard comments. And if you want me to read them every time, we can, but you'll know those standard comments are there. And then if we have any additional ones, we'll make sure that those are added to those. The engineering comments. Your drainage scenario for the cottages project includes regional detention at Shaw Park. Our ordinance currently requires peak runoff mitigation on site. The city is open to the use of the park water features as regional detention, but they must be properly designed for the purpose. In order for the cottages project to go to the PC this evening, you need to understand that any approval will be conditioned on approval of the underlying regional detention design. Design must be based on full development of the watershed and adequate peak runoff mitigation. Your current proposal doesn't appear to meet that standard. Your developer needs to know that subdivision approval will be conditioned on approval of the regional detention design. And so I think you understand that and we're working on getting all that taken care of.
Yes, I understand and understand it's conditionally approved based on the regional detention with the park. One comment I would like to make is that we have sized both of those retention ponds or lakes to significantly reduce the amount of flow onto the Elm Springs city limits across Ball Street to the west. And we've shown that in our drainage report. So I believe we satisfy the drainage concerns with the park and their drainage facilities.
Yeah, that was going to be a question I had is, is that it sounds like you guys have had conversations with some of the property owners in the Elm Springs portion?
No, we have not, but we've heard concerns. I mean, there have been significant.
Yeah, to me, you're doing nothing but helping them.
Right, we're trying to do everything we can with, within the means of the park and then the facilities to not just, you know, totally overdesign them, but also help, help those impacts downstream.
Are there any plans for Elm Springs on their portion of that to do any street improvements there?
I don't know that we have any way to address that. I don't know of anything. But I, but I do know, we've supported regional detention for a long time. That's what we need to go in a lot of situations that gives us this opportunity to do this one. It just wasn't mentioned before and now we know we're talking regional detention. Everybody understands the concept we're going after now, so.
Okay. I know that's not your concern to things like that, but I mean, it seems like this would be in the best interest of Elm Springs if they, you know, you're going to have a lot of disturbance to that area. Do both sides of the road at the same time in there, but.
We'll get into the street discussions when we get further along with their engineering plans and those kinds of stuff. They understand they have to do the street improvements along county line and Miller Road? No, what's the other one? Downham Road.
Downham.
Right, they understand those, they haven't submitted any of the design, that kind of stuff, they understand those.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney? Second by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Final plats, 19-01 BDP Holdings LLC, north side of Robinson Avenue, west of Dick Smith, presented by Tim Salmons.
Just requesting a simple lot split here for a commercial development.
Staff comments?
We need the estimate book and page numbers mentioned in the reference to the survey deed put on that and then the notary signature for the owner's statement and revise the community signature to.
That's about it?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Hi.
Ron Materna, I own the property behind this at 2453 Zerid. I was in two weeks ago and spoke with Mr. Baldwin, the engineer. And also, I believe we both spoke with Chris in the planning department about the runoff and the flooding that I'm having under my property. I do have some pictures here to show, this is from this year. It has progressively gotten worse since the first, or excuse me, the bank building was built on the corner of Dick Smith and Robinson. That increased the water flow onto my property. And since the last building they built is two doors down from me, the Fascinal Building, it again increased the water flow onto my property. It's at the point now where if there's anything additional and the drain work isn't done properly, I will have, it's up to the house now. It will be in the house if something doesn't happen shortly. So I ask your help in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they will be required before any construction goes on that site to come back with a site plan. A large scale or non-large scale plan that will address the drainage issues before. They're not allowed, they're not getting permission to build anything today. All they're getting is permission to split it into two tracks.
Right. And Mr. Baldwin did say that they would make it a large scale because of the drainage issues. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next section is large scale, 19-01 Dollar General, southeast corner of South Old Missouri Road and Spring Creek Drive, presented by Blue and Associates.
Hello, I'm Jacob Renick, representing Blue and Associates. This project is a 9100 square foot retail on an acre and a half lot fronted by Spring Creek, 265 and, drawing a blank on the, on the third road. It does have triple frontage, proposing retail, parking, detention, utility services, landscaping. And we will be available to, or I will be available to answer any questions that the commission might have.
Okay. Staff comments?
We only have standard comments about, comments from other utility companies and other city departments must be addressed. And the utility lines have to be put underground. I believe all of the drainage issues have been addressed. Engineering's good with this one? Yep, engineering's good with this one. Do you have, did you unload the elevations of the building?
It's right there.
They didn't ask for any variances to the commercial design standards?
Not to my knowledge. We do have a representative with the architect here who can answer those questions.
Am I incorrect, there's no, there's no, there's no variances to the commercial design standards?
Yeah, we're not requesting any variances.
We appreciate you being able to address our design standards with no.
Took a little tweaking, but we got the front to work out.
We appreciate all the time and effort it went in to address the commercial design. This just shows us it can be done.
Yeah, I thought I was reading the agenda wrong on that one, but, because it didn't have any.
And I wanted to point that out, that they did a good job.
No, that's great, appreciate that. Anything else? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Large scale passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next section is Board of Adjustments. We have B 19-01 Amber Mendez, 1297 Cooper Drive, variance for deviation to allow second residents in an A 1 district, presented by Amber Mendez.
Hi, Amber Mendez.
Can you tell us a little bit more about what you're looking for here?
So I have 7.16 acres on 1297 Cooper Drive. Half of that lot is, is in flood, in flood plain. However, we want to build a second residence. We will be living in the new residence. My parents will be moving into the existing residence. Right now, the issue is that we have, we need 200 feet of street frontage per home and we only have 283.
Staff comments?
I don't think we have any issues with this. Plenty of acreage, it just doesn't have enough frontage.
Correct.
And a lot of, as you said, a lot of the area can't be used because.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Variance passes 6-0.
Thank you for your time.
Let's see, the last one we have here is B 19-04 Edwards Design and Construction, 2370 Ford Avenue. Variance for deviation and perimeter landscaping requirement, presented by Bates and Associates.
Well, Bates called and said that Greg was going to be here tonight to represent, so they weren't, so I don't see him.
Okay. So we'll table B 19-04. And I think that's it, it's on their planning director report.
We talked, we discussed that we would reschedule the Christmas party to sometime in January and I think Debbie has some potential times, if y'all want to look at your calendars.
Apparently, January is a very popular time for people to meet at the Outback. They had the 15th, which is a Tuesday, and now they have a work session and I didn't know. And then the other one was the 24th on Thursday.
Final plea.
24th, does that work for everybody?
No, that's all you, sir.
So Roy's paying on behalf of everyone.
Roy's paying, he's not going to be there.
Newly ordained councilman Powell, I still believe you pay.
He left. Can I do the rest of this and we'll come back?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll make sure that Brian has this and also.
If you'll give that to me, then we'll make.
And Aaron as well, so.
I do need to let you know that Aaron has submitted his resignation to the, to the planning commission. He has accepted a job with RDOT and will be relocating and so we had. and so we hate to see him go. Good opportunity for him. Uh, the mayor did indicate that both Roy and Shannon would be reappointed at the next meeting or so, and then we will have those two vacancies, and we are in the process of coming up with, uh, people to fill those vacancies. I think it's the mayor's intention to have those filled by the next meeting as well. Uh, the work session for the fifteenth, uh, we need to discuss the food truck and make sure we address the comments and questions that came up tonight. Um, we need to start a discussion of the master street plan and the master trail plan. We will have a presentation by the Tool Group, which is a consultant that was hired by a grant from the Walton Family Foundation to bike NWA to assist in preparation of a safe, of safe, safe street policies for the city of Springdale that can be used as the region too, and it includes how we incorporate bike facilities into all of our different street designs, and so they'll make a presentation that night. So, we have a pretty full agenda for the meeting on the fifteenth. Also, would like to schedule a work session for January the twenty-ninth. At five-thirty, we will have Deckard Duvall, who is the architect for the criminal justice building, will be with us that night to, uh, show you the plans and the layout for the new criminal justice building, because they're getting ready to bring that forward as well, so that you'll have a chance to ask any questions, to make sure we don't have any issues before we get too much further along with the project. Twenty-ninth, both of those meetings at five-thirty, right. Two work sessions this month, this is a privilege of having an extra Tuesday.
On the twenty-fourth, it is six o'clock. Would that be okay?
Fourth at six o'clock?
Okay.
And that's all I have?
For the next, uh, planning commission meeting, will we also be voting on officer positions and stuff like that?
We need to put officers on the next, because we should have a full slate of planning commissioners.
If y'all let Patsy know, um, if you're interested in continuing on with your positions, we do have a, a vacant position as well, so, and if you do have an interest in that,
Uh, the city clerk's office, you all should have gotten your, uh, state in a financial interest. She said last year, some of y'all wanted hard copies, so I've got hard, I've got two. I can make more if you want them, otherwise, y'all can fill them out online.
Yeah, they need to be filed with the county clerk's office by, that circuit clerk or the county clerk by the end of the month.
City clerks, they've gotta be-
Thirty-first.
By the thirty-first of January at five o'clock.
So, Brian, can you, out of your present email or whatever, send us out the position just so we know who does what?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the, the current slate, and then, yeah, we'll get those out to you.
Okay. All right.
No, it should be in here. It's, oh, no, upstairs, I'm sorry. Both of those should be upstairs, I'm sorry.
We need to go back to B nineteen dash zero four, Edwards Design and Construction, twenty-three seventy Ford Avenue, variance for deviation of perimeter landscaping. Um-
Lucky Greg, we were about to, to leave without you.
Presented by Greg.
Wanna come talk to, do we have pictures?
No, just restarted.
Oh, okay. Okay, it'll, it'll be a minute.
Do you wanna go and come up to the mic? Did, but you made it.
I did make it.
Do you wanna tell us a little bit about this, please?
Yes, uh, what we're doing is, uh, we're asking for a variance on the landscaping. What we did is we planted everything on the plans, with the exception of the trees that are in the fenced-in area, and we wanted to delete all of those. We did plant them around the detention pond. We added some at the detention pond that weren't even shown, uh, to take up some of the space that, where we didn't put them. What it did is it just took up too much of his yard. The guy that's leasing it doesn't want them, and he was gonna be here tonight, but he had another engagement and couldn't make it, so.
Have you, uh, put gravel down on this lot?
Yes.
And you put it all the way to the fence?
Uh, we put it, yeah, to the fence on both sides, but only, we didn't put, uh, well, we put concrete back so far, and then we put gravel, yeah.
The area that you were gonna use for storage of the heavy equipment, but you did it all the way to the property line, instead of leaving that ten-foot space for-
Yes, exactly.
Any other comments? Any comments or questions from the audience? To the commission?
So, so the amount of landscaping that you are short is how much? You said you put some extra trees somewhere?
Well, it's probably, I bet there was-
You didn't put extra trees, you put what was approved on the plan.
We put what was approved, but then we did add some back at the detention pond that were not shown, because we took those out. I think we added maybe four back there, five maybe. We just put them up there instead of along the side, and there's probably, I'm gonna say, we probably deleted fifteen to twenty. They were shown over ten feet for, all the way around that. I think it's-
But-
Couple hundred foot deep.
But, but if they're required, then my question is, is the lot too small for the intended purpose, or, 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 you know, in, in the case of that location, can you relocate the landscaping to make it work and come closer?
Do what now? I don't guess.
Can you relocate the landscaping that you're skipping?
Well, I, I relocated as much of it as I could.
Outside of the fence, or, because if there's not any showing that you're making an intent to follow the ordinance, we have others people who are coming in, and it's to protect the property values of others that are building in there as well.
I don't know, I think we put enough trees in there to make it look presentable. I mean, it looks good to me. Uh, I, the guy that I'm renting the building to doesn't want them in there, and, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I'll put them in there, if, and if he's the one paying the bill, and if he tells me to not put them there, I'm gonna come and try to take them out. The lot will not work for him as well if you put the trees in there. If, if you put a tree up close to that fence, it probably takes up ten feet of his, of his space on each side, so you're, he's losing twenty feet of storage space.
And, uh, right, but if, but if we go by that, then half of the town might be paved because, you know, the front lawns don't leave space for the parking of a lot of cars, right? So, so, so there's a reason we have the ordinance.
Well, I guess, yeah. I'm just asking for a variance up from it.
So, you had roughly fifteen that you took out, you replaced four or five-
Back at the detention.
Your ops about ten, right?
Probably ten to fifteen, yeah. I, I didn't get an accurate count of them, I didn't know. That would be a question, but there is, there's a substantial amount.
And is there anywhere else outside of that fenced area that you think you can stick in?
We put them everywhere that we could, yeah. We pretty much, but we even put three up on the front, alongside, before the fence starts. So, yeah, we, we put as many in as we think we could get in.
Any other questions or comments? Be a call for the vote. Yes, sorry, Mayor.
Just, just because I met with Greg earlier on this, and I, I, I just, as I looked at it, and I appreciate your questions, BB, I, I think, you know, we're in an industrial area here that's against industrial area and backs up to industrial area, and I think it, based on my conversation with, with Greg, they've tried to, they, they've actually put more landscaping in some areas as much as they could to help, uh, to help make this more palatable to our commission, and, uh, it just seems like, you know, I, I, I know, I know what the rules are, and I know when we, uh, when we, uh, deviate, we have to be very careful because of the points you brought up, but I think this is a, this is an area that, uh, that landscaping in the back, uh, where no one sees it except the back of other buildings, uh, industrial buildings, I think is, is less, uh, critical for us, and, uh, but anyway, I, I would not have been treating Greg fairly if I had not, uh, relayed our conversation and the gist of our conversation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Just be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Variance passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Any other questions, comments? All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.